Planning Board, September 23rd, 2021, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So with this special joint public hearing, with the planning board, the town board will open their public hearing to consider a reuse special permit for the industrial site and the planning board will open up their public hearing for the site plan approval. So do I have a motion to open a public hearing?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing now open. Chairman?
And do I have a motion to open a public hearing for the planning board?
So moved.
And all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Passes.
Thank you, Chairman. So just a little background, this is a special meeting, town board, planning board. We don't do this very often, but we do it to accommodate some applications. And just a little background, this is going to be a facility on I Park property, which is located off of Route 52. A little background on the property, so originally this was the east campus of the IBM facility, which at one point IBM sold to Global Foundries and at that point they did a subdivision. Concurrently, the town board did a general environmental impact study on the entire site, east and west campus actually, so we can encourage multiple uses on that site. Originally, it was just a site for microchip processing and the town board felt it was time to allow different uses on that site, which came into fruition I Park. And I Park has many, many different companies at that site, which is very successful. And tonight, we are going to hear from Frito Lay on what their proposal is. So why don't we go into that while we have the applicant give their presentation?
Mask off. Good evening, everyone. For the record, my name is Jennifer Gray. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Keenan Bean in White Plains. And I'm here tonight representing Rolling Frito Lay Sales LP. Rolling Frito Lay Sales is a subsidiary of PepsiCo. And we are here in support of our application for the construction of a fulfillment center at the former IBM East Campus, now known as I Park 84, as Supervisor DeLisandro just described. We all know PepsiCo as a leading global food and beverage company. It has subsidiaries that produce products from brands like Pepsi, Frito Lay, Quaker, Gatorade, SodaStream, Bubbly. The Frito Lay subsidiary of PepsiCo makes markets and distributes snack foods like Fritos, Doritos, Cheetos, Ruffles, Tostitos, Lay's potato chips, and now Popcorners, which is a new acquisition out of, right here in Orange County, right next door, I should say, in Orange County. We are here tonight on behalf of Frito Lay for a fulfillment or distribution center. This will not be a manufacturing center, so that the chips that you may have in your cupboard at home will not be made here in East Fishkill. We won't be smelling the potato chips being baked from Route 52, but it will be a fulfillment center where products will come from the manufacturing plants to East Fishkill and then will be distributed from here to Frito Lay's customers throughout the northeast market. The applicant is very excited to join the East Fishkill community, looks forward to bringing good jobs and tax revenue to the community by redeveloping and revitalizing the site that has been vacant for some time on the I Park campus. With the project, we anticipate bringing 80 full-time positions on a permanent basis when the fulfillment center is open. There'll also be about 80 construction jobs generated from the project. We are familiar with the town board's efforts over the past several years to amend its zoning at the former IBM campus to help facilitate the redevelopment in this location. This particular location seems to be targeted due to its location near I-84 and the infrastructure that's already available on site. And recent applications that you've seen have demonstrated that the zoning is working. Amazon, Liongate, Sloop Brewery, and now Frito Lay, among others. Frito Lay has been actively searching for a site for its fulfillment center for some time, and it was attracted to East Fishkill for these reasons: proximity to 84 and the already developed infrastructure on the site. From a land use or impact perspective, what's great about these I Park companies on the IBM campus, including Frito Lay, is that unlike a large residential development that may generate a large number of school-aged children, these types of projects bring a large tax revenue to the town without adding corresponding burden to the school district. Over the next 15 years, the applicant does anticipate contributing the following tax revenues to the community. We're estimating approximately $5 million over 15 years to the school district, about $700,000 to the county, and just over $700,000 to the town. That's above and beyond the taxes that are currently generated on the property. PepsiCo and Frito Lay have a long history of being great contributors to the communities in which they're located. It's a Fortune 50 company, recognized year after year with awards for ethics and diversity, environmental sustainability, and other great, great things. Last year, they were recognized by Fortune Magazine as one of the world's most admired companies. They also are involved in various local, regional, and national charities like the Robin Hood Foundation, United Way, Food for Good, and anticipates becoming involved in local and regional charities in East Fishkill as well. So just a little bit of housekeeping, the approvals that we do need for the project are an economic redevelopment special permit from the town board. And from the planning board, site plan and subdivision approvals are necessary. We did meet with the planning board recently, so the planning board, as well as the town board, are familiar with those approvals that we need. We have been also actively engaged with outside agencies as well, DOT, Dutchess County Department of Health, and also with Global Foundries with respect to the water and sewer utilities that we will need on site. DOT, there was, as recent as this past Tuesday afternoon, DOT met on site with our traffic engineers and the town's traffic engineer. We have received comments from your consulting engineer, also from your planner, from the fire advisory board, and this morning, we received comments from Westchester County Planning. We've submitted yesterday a response to CPL, to your consulting engineer's comments, and responses to the other comments are forthcoming. Another housekeeping item for secret purposes, we are a Type 1 action, a full EAF with the various environmental studies, which we discussed at the last town board meeting. Were submitted for your review in August. That included a traffic study, noise study, and other studies. This is a Type 1 action because it's a facility that has more than 100,000 square feet of gross floor area, so it checks that box as being a Type 1 action. Before I turn it over to the project team to run through some of the slides that we've prepared, I want to just hit a couple of important items that I think are important to emphasize with respect to the application. One is the appearance. We understand that because the building is going to be fronting on Route 52 in that parking lot that you see now from 52, appearance of the building is very important. And we have designed the building to mimic an office-type building, so it won't look like a warehouse. It won't look like a fulfillment center. We're aiming to achieve more of an office-type look to help, and there's design features to help break up that facade along 52 and add some interest with details like a cornice at the top of the building. The facility will feature, as we discussed in prior meetings, a piece of specialized equipment called an Automated Storage and Retrieval System, ASRS. This is a vertically oriented piece of machinery, and it's used to optimize the storage and retrieval of the inventory that's stored in the building. It allows for an efficient use of space. If we didn't have this vertical machinery, it's likely we would need a footprint of almost three times as much as what we're proposing here. At the last town board meeting, we, and what's reflected in our submittal from August, is a height for 25% of the building at 85 feet, which is about five, which is five feet over the zoning threshold. Since the last town board meeting and since that submission, what we've done is we've gone back, sharpened our pencils, and gotten that height, we've reduced the height down to below 80 feet. So it is zoning compliant at this time. You will see that reflected when we submit a revised set of plans. So that is good news with respect to the project. As far as landscaping is concerned, that teardrop berm area that you see from 52, that's a landscaped area with a lot of trees, that will be maintained. That will be maintained as is to serve as screening, landscape screening for the building. From a stormwater perspective, we are not increasing the impervious surface coverage that's already, that's existing on the site. In fact, we've designed this to actually reduce, the intent is to reduce the amount of asphalt on the site, the amount of impervious surface coverage. And then with respect to traffic, we anticipate very little traffic during the peak hours along 52 due to the proposed routes. There's no truck traffic being proposed to access the site from Route 52. And the shift changes associated with the operation of the fulfillment center, which we'll discuss in the presentation, will avoid those peak hours, especially during the school rush hour, which we know can be a problem. So we're here tonight with a lot of folks. We have from Frito Lay, Stephanie Hanger and Devash Patel. We also have Chuck Mueller, who's a consultant with Frito Lay. We have our professional engineering and design consultants, CHA, represented here tonight from my office. We have Nick Ward-Willis with us tonight, and also our traffic engineer, Anthony Russo, from AKRF. So with that, what I'm going to do is I'm going to turn it over to Devash from Frito Lay to run through the slides, and then Anthony's going to pick up where Devash leaves off to talk about the traffic study. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. My name is Devash Patel. I'm an employee of PepsiCo. Specifically, I am the engineering program manager with oversight on this project. On behalf of Frito Lay, first, I want to extend our appreciation for allowing us to be here tonight and present our application to both the town board, the planning board, and also to the public. As Jennifer mentioned, we have spent many months looking for a potential site for our next fulfillment center here in the northeast part of the United States. We're excited about potentially bringing a fulfillment center to the town of East Fishkill and being a member of this community. As Jennifer mentioned, we truly try to be an active member of the community, and based off our many months we've spent here thus far is truly, it does appear a great place to be and set up a fulfillment center. So once again, I appreciate the opportunity for that. Just as an agenda of the presentation tonight, I'll review the existing site and the proposed layout. We'll talk about access and parking, touch on a little bit the stormwater and utilities, and then go a little bit deeper on the sound study, our landscaping plan, lighting, and then finally, as we mentioned, our traffic engineer will talk about the traffic study that was conducted here recently. So just to give you a highlight of the site plan itself and what it entails. As the town supervisor mentioned earlier, it is on the east side of IBM's former campus. Here, just for reference, at the top here, you see Route 52. I Park Boulevard is here at the side of the page, and then we have Gate 1 and John Jay here to the far left. When we look at the overall site plan, our intention is to build on, if you will, areas that are previously disturbed. And so with that, we have put the fulfillment center on the existing parking lot.
Could you make sure you speak into the microphone, because then the people at home couldn't hear you.
Okay.
You could bring that with you.
Sure. And so with that, we have developed the fulfillment center on the existing parking lot. And so with that, we're not disturbing any of the natural resources, wetlands, things of that nature, et cetera. Overall, the project is about 157,000 square feet. That is comprised of three buildings, so that's the fulfillment center itself, which is about 140,000 square feet, the fleet center here on the far left, and then the guardhouse that is on the far right that we have for security reasons as well. As Jennifer mentioned, we have done some work around the height of the ASRS, which is this portion here, and lowered that down within the 80-feet requirement over the last couple of weeks since we met with the town board previously. From a loading dock perspective with respect to Route 52, when we did the site plan, we tried to keep that away from 52, if you will. So you can see the loading docks have been positioned here and here on the backside of the property away from Route 52, so we did keep that in mind as well. And then from a parking perspective, we believe we have ample parking on site. Total about 108 parking spaces for our automobiles. Those are here primarily. We have trailer spaces at 100 parking spots here, and then also some tractor spots here as well. As Jennifer mentioned, although I come to you here as an employee of Frito Lay, there will be no manufacturing on site, so no processing of raw materials, no potatoes, no oil, things like that that are coming in into the site or being processed or waste going out of the site. So this is strictly a fulfillment center that will bring in goods from the surrounding areas, all the way from the state of Connecticut to the state of Maryland, coming in to the site and then being processed, palletized, and distributed out to the surrounding areas. So just a couple more aerials and renderings of the site itself. So this is what it looks like in current state today. As you can see, it is primarily a parking lot. I think many know the previous history with Global Foundries, IBM, et cetera. You can see some of the existing landscaping that is there today and the berm that exists on Route 52. So this is a overview with our building footprint laid in, if you will. So this is a vantage point from Route 52. Looking west, you can see the fulfillment center there and the ASRS there at the top, and then how it kind of blends in with the background there and the viewpoint from a landscaping perspective of what it would look like. This is a viewpoint from the other direction, so if you're looking from Gate 1 or West Drive towards the east, the thing I wanted to highlight here is the fleet center, which I mentioned earlier, is that building there. And that is where some low infrastructure maintenance will take place on our fleet of tractor-trailers as needed. And then you can also see some of the parking spaces that we've added as well to the site. So this is a little bit more, gives you a glimpse of the architectural detail that we're looking to include on the facility. As Jennifer mentioned earlier, we're looking to give this more of an artistic feel than maybe the typical warehouse that you may see elsewhere, as we look to be a part of the community and be a part of Route 52. So we've done a couple of things here I wanted to highlight. We attempted to break up the building facade, if you will. You can see we've leveraged different colors from that perspective. You can see that the mix of the gray and the brown there. We've articulated the roof line, and so as discussed earlier, we've added the cornice there at the top. And then we've got the red strip there in the middle of the bottom. So once again, trying to distinguish this from a typical warehouse that you may see elsewhere, we've really paid some attention to highlight some of these areas going forward. Also, as you can see, some of the landscaping and whatnot that we've added there as well. And we've got some, we'll review this with the architectural review board, I believe, on the 7th in a couple of weeks, and have samples and whatnot to show them as well. This is a viewpoint from 52, going down 52. This is as if you're traveling towards Gate 2, where there is currently a traffic cycle not in use. One thing I wanted to point out here is you can see a sign there in the back. That's our monument sign for the facility. You'll notice it's there behind the turning lane there that's going into the property, but, and then once again, you can see some of the landscaping that will shield, if you will, the fulfillment center from Route 52 as you head westbound towards Gate 1, Palin Road, et cetera. This is another rendering, once again, of 52 from the side. So you can see there in the background, that is the ASRS or the building that we mentioned earlier that was near 80 foot tall. You can kind of see now, based off our proposal, how it would interface or look compared to the current trees that are there today. And then finally, this is from Gate 1, looking east there, right there at the traffic light. So you can see the fulfillment center there a little bit, the roof line there in the background. And then if, but if you look towards the fleet center, you can see that's pretty well shielded there as well with the trees from this vantage point. From a subdivision perspective, as Jennifer mentioned earlier, the existing lots were two and three, as shown on the left. We are looking to combine it to a new lot, Lot 9, based off the proposed acreage and purchase from I Park forthcoming. From a site access perspective, they will be coming off, primarily off of I-84, and then coming down I Park Boulevard. If it is a tractor-trailer, it will take a left on Shenandoah Road and come through Gate 3, at which time it will take a right and then go towards the entrance of the facility. Once again, will be a secure facility. There will be a guardhouse there that will let those tractor-trailers in or out. No tractor-trailers will be going down Route 52 at this time. From personnel vehicles, they have two options. The first option, once again, is to take Gate 3 or go down I Park Boulevard, take a left on Shenandoah, and go through Gate 3 somewhere to the entrance that was previously described for the tractor-trailers. The other option is to go down Route 52 and utilize Gate 2 and come in through there. So that will also be, we also have gates up there as well. We have reviewed this with the DOT, as Jennifer mentioned earlier. We'll talk about this a little bit more when our traffic, as our traffic engineer comes up to talk here at the end of the presentation. In terms of internal site access, a couple of key things I wanted to highlight here. We will maintain the existing access that is around the site. One of the main drivers for that is to ensure we have the necessary emergency access for fire and rescue and others that is required to service the campus. There is also a pump house that serves the potable water for the site, that we also want to make sure Global Foundries and others have adequate access to service that as needed there. So we've maintained access for that as well. And as I mentioned, Gate 2 will be for employee and visitor automobile access, and then Gate 3 for tractor-trailers and employees as needed. From a landscaping perspective, we have maintained a lot of the existing landscape that is there. The only ones that we had to modify were for grading reasons as needed, but we have also added some landscaping, and you can kind of see it there as shown with the dark green and the light green pictorial there as well. Once again, our intent is to maintain net zero impact to the current pervious area with our site plan. From a traffic, site parking perspective, we are a night shift operation primarily, and so our hours, as shown, will be from 8 to 12 currently. And so our peak time, from a business perspective, is around 4:00 a.m., and so that is essentially when the shift exchange occurs. And so as we think about impact to the community on the roads and whatnot, that will be the, that four o'clock timeframe in the morning is where we feel we have the biggest impact. During the day, if you will, you see eight people shown from 8 to 5. That is more for managerial and administrative staff that will help support the facility during the day. And then once again, from a parking perspective, you can see some of the counts there for the various areas. I will highlight that we do have ADA parking in the various groups. And then also, as I mentioned earlier, we've provided some parking for the water supply building there as well. So all in, around 108 total parking spaces. As we mentioned earlier, we are looking to bring 80 full-time jobs to the facility. So you can see we have a little bit, we are conservative in our number there as well, as you compare the 80 to 108 total automobile parking spaces. Just to talk a little bit about the utilities from a stormwater perspective, our intent is to maintain the current infrastructure as much as possible and the control methodology in terms of sending everything to the east or to the west portions of the campus. Once again, no increase in the impervious area, as shown. We have a couple, five water quality treatment structures there in place as well. We will be submitting a stormwater protection prevention plan to the DEC for review as well. We have, we did have a discussion with Global Foundries here this week to discuss our water and sewer plan with them to get their alignment that this proposal is sufficient, and early indications from them are they are aligned. We have follow-up discussions with them forthcoming as well. I just hit the highlights on the utilities as well. We, from electricity perspective, we have been in discussions with Central Hudson Gas and Electric to talk about the electricity needs there. From a natural gas perspective, we do understand they're looking to bring a gas line down Route 52, and we will look to engage with them on that endeavor as well to service the facility. Water, specifically domestic, our current usage is estimated to be at 427 gallons per day. Once again, this is a fulfillment center. We're not producing any chips here, so that is indicated by that value there. That is typically, that is strictly for various fixtures and whatnot in the facility. We did have a conversation, once again, with Global Foundries on that demand. Overall, they use about 2.6 billion gallons a day, so this is, you know, minimal in terms of impact to their overall facility as a whole. Similar comment on the sanitary sewer side of it, 883 gallons per day is our current estimate. Majority of that is coming from a truck wash that will be inside of the fleet center itself. And then finally, fire, water. We will utilize existing water system infrastructure that currently exists on site. We're currently in discussions whether to leverage the on-site facility or have discussions with the town and leveraging their resources as well. And we have, in fact, open discussions with the fire advisory board as well, as Jennifer mentioned earlier, on some of those details. From a sound perspective, we wanted, once again, we wanted to be conscientious of our community impact in that regard. So we did have, we did complete a study in June based off three different data points surrounding the site. The first being, as shown, is MP1. Biggest watch out there was to make sure we did not have any impact on John Jay High School and the neighboring community there. As you can see, based on that table, those results came back to be favorable in that regard. MP2, which is a data point to show understanding impact to Route 52 and potential homes in that area. Another sample was done there. And then finally, MP3, which is right there off of I Park Boulevard as a whole. In summary, we did not exceed the noise ordinance as described by the town of East Fishkill, 070 DPA. And then the DEC guidance from an ambient perspective of plus six decibels was not reached either. From an overall sound perspective, our true main sources potentially would be the tractor-trailers themselves, and then maybe any kind of HVAC on the roof. But once again, as shown here, we do not believe it will have an impact from a sound perspective on the neighboring community. And then I also wanted to talk about lighting. And so what you see here is a photometric map of where the proposed light poles and wall packs, et cetera, will be in relation to the building and then the surrounding area. And you can see there on the side, on the bottom right, a graph showing the foot candles at the various stages. I want to bring your attention to, with blue being zero, so if you look at the top, where Route 52 would be, a very minimal, or no impact, excuse me, there on Route 52. I would remind the team that, you know, there are existing light poles there in the parking lot that serves the facility. We do not believe it will have any more impact than what is there today based off this analysis. We will be using dark sky. We will be using dark sky friendly lighting, as, as described there, trying to minimize any impact on the surrounding communities. There are a couple of, of highlights there in, in yellow and, and green. A lot of that is around some of the, for security reasons, folks entering and exiting the, the facility. From there, I'll turn it over to our traffic engineer.
That feels good. Good evening. My name is Anthony Russo. I'm with the firm AKRF. We have the traffic consultants on the Frito-Lay job. First, what I'd like to do is just thank the town staff, Michelle and Brendan, for their assistance. I've been on the phone with them over the last week or so, going over some of the methodology and some of the access issues for the site. And also thanking for helping setting up the meeting with DOT that was very successful that we had this past week. So the staff has been helpful with their input. So thank you. The traffic study that was prepared looked at the intersections that are listed there. Seven intersections, Route fifty-two in Palin and Gate One, Route fifty-two, East Drive and Gate Two, Route fifty-two in I Park Boulevard, I Park Boulevard, Shenandoah Road, Gate Three, I Park Boulevard and Old Limekill Road, Gate Five, and the ramps, both the eastbound and westbound and eighty-four at I Park Boulevard and the Limekill interchange. So those are the key intersections. The hours, the peak hours for the traffic network, based on the counts, are seven to eight in the morning and four forty-five to five forty-five PM. And as you can see, and has been discussed before, these shifts do not occur during what I'm calling the typical commuter peak hour or the school peak hour. Eight to five, you have eight employees and basically management, and the shift change occurs at four AM. However, in order to provide for a conservative traffic impact study, which is typically required by DOT and by the traffic consultant for municipalities, I also represent municipalities, I also require conservative traffic impact studies, you know, to protect the town that I work for. We overlaid the peak of the Frito-Lay project onto the peak of the network, even though they do not coincide with each other. So in that way, it's a very conservative analysis, and that is the one key point I like to make. And you can, it's seen here on the slide to your right.
Quick question. For the, for your folks that are working from four AM to noon, what are they going to do for lunch? Because in the middle of the day, it would seem to me to put them right in the center of that peak period.
In terms of lunch while they're on shift, or?
Yeah, while they're on, while they're on shift. I'm assuming they get some time off, they might want to go off-site to, you know, hit, hit a local deli or something.
You have a cafeteria onsite or where?
Yeah, most of our, most of our employees bring their, bring their lunch in our, and we eat the cafeteria onsite.
Okay.
So there's going to be a cafeteria as part of this distribution center, then?
There's a break room onsite, so they'll bring their lunch or food from home.
So it's not expected, you know, much traffic to be leaving the site, if at all, because they have the facilities onsite to accommodate their workers for lunch.
Sure, they got lots of snacks.
Well, there's no doubt about that. And, and this is probably the most important company during Super Bowl Sunday, but that, that's another issue. So what you're seeing here is the traffic that was used in the traffic study based on the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Handbook. Again, this is a very conservative analysis. It's actually showing more cars than they have employees. And again, these car trips do not occur during the peak hour for the commuters or for the schools, but yet they were superimposed onto it. And it's showing, you know, approximately five to seven truck trips during the peak hour. And again, they're going to only have forty-eight trucks over a course of a day, which is basically one in, one out. So again, the truck numbers are also conservative. So I've used that term a lot, but I just wanted to make you aware that in our conversations with your town consultant and with DOT, we've made certain that we've made every assumption as conservative as possible. So make sure that when we get to the impact criteria part, that we've indeed, you know, looked at the worst case, reasonable worst case scenario in terms of impact assessment. Next slide. So as mentioned before, what's really good about this site is its proximity to I eighty-four. And that's what makes it very attractive, and it's very good for traffic. Because in terms of assignment, all the trucks will come off of eighty-four and they will go into Gate Three. So that means there'll be no truck traffic on fifty-two or the local roads. In terms of employee traffic, I spoke to National Resources, spoke to Global Foundries. Presently, Gate Three has only been used for trucks. But in speaking to National Resources, in order to minimize auto trips on a fifty-two, they've agreed also to allow Frito-Lay for the majority of the cars, about seventy-five percent are still going to come off that interstate eighty-four, and they are also going to utilize Gate Three. So all truck traffic and the vast majority of the auto trips, employee trips, are going to be using Gate Three. And I Park Boulevard, you know, in its heyday, when IBM was, you know, in its full glory, is a wide road. It has turning lanes, it's made to handle the traffic, this is not a lot of traffic anyway, it's made to handle this type of traffic very easily with no impact. We recently had a meeting this past week with New York State DOT to talk about Gate Two up on Route fifty-two. The traffic that's assigned to Gate Two is approximately twenty-five percent of the employees. Our distribution is consistent with the Redtail study. The local traffic for employees that might be coming to the site that we use Gate Two will only add about twenty-five or thirty cars in a peak hour to Gate Two. We met with DOT, they do not have a problem with opening Gate Two for that level of traffic. It actually is going to be less, again, it's not going to occur during a peak hour, but we assume that it would. We also talked about the existing traffic signal that's out there. It will not be needed for this level of traffic, it will be a stop sign control. You'll also have security gate there as well. There is an existing traffic bag signal that's there, it's, should be in a museum, that's how old it is. That is going to be taken down, and that I saw will be gone, so you won't see the traffic signal anymore. We also talked about signage. It's been a while since this gate's been open, so there will be a new sign that will be put up that says Gate Two, and underneath it, it will say new. And there'll be advance warning signs along fifty-two alerting people to the driveway. This way, people are familiar with now this gate, which has been closed. Now, I've been a red, I was a resident of Duchess County over twenty years, it's always been closed. That, at least are aware now that it's open and there's a business there. So when you add up everything, you take our existing conditions, the no build information, all the projects that will be built in the year twenty twenty-three, when this is projected to be opened, this facility, we got that information from the town planner. And also, everything that would be built on the I Park site, other warehouses and other facilities. And you overlay that on, on the existing, and you compare it to the bill conditions for twenty twenty-three, there is no impact to the surrounding network that requires mitigation. And that, again, has to do with the fact that the vast majority of the traffic is coming up and down I Park Boulevard and Gate Three. So that's good news. So that's, that's a summary of the, of the traffic impact study. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
So that concludes our presentation for tonight. We're happy to answer any questions that the board may have, both the planning board and the town board. And, and any, you know, we're, we're happy to hear any comments that the public may have.
Sure. Why don't we start with the planning board or town board? Any comments or questions first? No, planning board?
Well, I'll, I'll say something if anyone wants to say anything. I just want to thank you again for the presentation and for coming out this evening. I do appreciate the reduction in height of twenty-five percent of the building. That, that was very quick, and I'm glad that you guys sharpened your pencils on that. And also keeping Route fifty-two clear, because the peak traffic, even though, as you just showed in the traffic study, that you're going to be away from that, I know it's going to be a concern of a lot of our citizens, because it does back up quite a bit and the area is growing. And also for the look of the building, making it look like an office, I think, is very nice also, so.
Thank you, councilman, and I, I, I agree, thank you for the presentation. But the town does have a significant traffic improvement plan that we're developing right now for Fifty-two Corridor. Whether you say there's no impact or not, one car is an impact. Okay? Any car extra on that road is an impact. So that's why we're going forward, doing a, a very serious and intense traffic mitigation plan for that whole corridor, which we are coming close to completion. But while I might engender more questions, would the town attorney give us the process?
Sure, it might be helpful to everyone. So tonight is, as everyone knows, a joint public hearing. But there is actually four parallel proceedings taking place at the same time in reviewing this project. The town board's public hearing this evening is part of their responsibility under the zoning ordinance to hold a public hearing prior to considering a special reuse, a reuse special permit, which is a permit that's for this entire I Park Global Foundry area. The planning board is opening tonight a public hearing on their job in reviewing the subdivision proposal as well as the site plan. The planning board will continue their public hearings over the course of their next few meetings during October and November at their regular time, but we usually start larger projects together, so we all kick it off together. The other role that the town board will be processing is known as SEQA, the State Environmental Quality Review Law. And for those of you who might remember our August town board meeting, the town board at that evening adopted a resolution indicating their intent to become the lead agency. And what that is, under the SEQA, all of the issues that were mentioned and any others we might identify, the traffic, the water, the stormwater, the looks of the building, everything, the sound, the noise, the lights, all of them have to be reviewed to the satisfaction of the lead agency conducting the SEQA review. So the town board in August, as I said, adopted a resolution to seek lead agency. They then gave notice of that intent to many different agencies, some of whom were mentioned tonight, DOT, Department of Health. And after thirty days, which will be in a couple of days, two or three days, the town board would then, in their role under SEQA, be able to declare themselves lead agency and take on the legal responsibility of conducting that study. So the plan would be in the October town board, meaning the town board would become lead agency, barring any objections from any of the other agencies, which we don't expect. As part of the application that's already on file with the town, available for public review, is an extensive environmental assessment form, which was prepared by the applicant. It has many of the studies attached, all the studies attached to it that they've referenced. And that may even be supplemented further based on what the town board hears tonight, what the planning board hears over the course of their meetings. So this is the, the process, it's complicated, but the intent of the process is to hopefully identify all the issues and to address them so that if and when there is a consideration of granting an approval, both the town board and the planning board are confident, if they decide to approve it, that all of the issues have been reviewed and mitigated and resolved. So maybe that will help the perspective as to how. So even though the town board may close its public hearing tonight on their legislative role, input to the town board continues at all the meetings between now and whenever. They'll consider both the secret determination as well as reuse special permit. At the town board meetings, there's the courtesy of the floor, and everyone can speak about any item pertaining to this project that might be on the agenda.
So, thank you. Any other comments from planning board members?
I do, I have one question. With regards to the, the truck facility, you indicated that there'll be three processes that'll take place there. You'll be repairing trucks, refueling trucks, and you'll be washing trucks, right? Am I correct? So with regards to the washing part of that facility, how will that chemical that you use to clean the truck be contained? And will any water be processed for reuse of the same type of use with regards to the washing?
So we have an oil and water separator in scope for that to delineate between the two, so there's no contamination in that regard.
So there'll be no reuse of water, you will not recondition water to be reused for that same process? So all that will end up stormwater or gray water?
Right.
Thank you.
And you've mentioned before that you lowered the height of the building. So are there any variances needed for the project?
No, there are no variances or town board waivers needed.
Okay, very good. Okay, any other comments or questions?
You're getting back to my, to my launch point. How can you be sure that all thirty-six of your employees are going to be eating in the cafeteria and nobody's going to go?
They won't. They're going to be shopping and going out.
I actually encourage them to leave and go support our local businesses.
Well, exactly, you know. But I would figure at least one third, and then you got the other eight people in your eight to five, so I'm, I'm counting at least like twenty extra cars during that peak period there.
So throughout the shift, which is typically eight hours, we will have staggered breaks and lunch schedules for our employees. They are typically thirty-minute breaks. Typically, what we've seen is in those individuals, once again, will bring the food from home and eat there in our break room, rest, relax, refresh, and then go back to their shift. But to answer your question, there are staggered lunch breaks that occur throughout the day.
Just to follow up and answer your question too, I, I think one of the things that Anthony pointed out, and which, again, to understand, is that they did actually analyze that traffic during the peak hour. You know, that, that, that's what we asked of them, so that it wasn't, we didn't look at just the eight employees. We actually looked at the, even a little bit more than what the maximum traffic could be in those peak hours. So that traffic, whoever would be leaving there in that peak hour, that, that's the analysis that they completed for the project.
Councilor? Does the, does PepsiCo or Frito-Lay have some sort of no idling or limited, limiting idling policy for their trucks? I know that it's, you know, well below the, the sound variance, but, not the variance, but our policy on noise. But I know the school is there, and not all classrooms have air conditioning, and in the spring and, and summer and early fall months, they might have their windows open, so.
Yeah, we have various rules and regulations around no idling for our drivers. I can't state it specifically here today, but we do have asks or requirements of our team. Okay, great.
Any other comments before we ask the public? I mean, we could go back and ask anytime. Anybody in the public wish to speak for or against, or any comments or questions? Sure, come right up to the podium. There's a sign-in sheet there, please, if you could sign your name and it says address, but you could just put what general area town you do live in, please.
My name's Rob Teagle, and I have a couple of questions. So I saw the building was eighty foot, with the length and eight foot high, then you're going to come up to eighty feet. How far is that building from the center of fifty-two? There was no dimension saying how far you're going to be offset.
So we are maintaining the, the hundred-foot setback per the permit requirements from fifty-two. I believe it's around a hundred and, a hundred and forty feet, I want to say, off of fifty-two.
So you can be really butting up right against, you have that perimeter road to go, I, I worked at IBM for thirty-five years, so I know that facility. So you're going around that perimeter road, and you're going to be, how far from that perimeter road? By now, sixty feet and your building starts?
If you, if you look right in front of you here on this placard, you, you can see it.
Take a quick look.
It looks like there's parts where it's butted pretty much.
You can tell me from that perimeter road that goes around.
So this is, this is the perimeter road that goes around the site, and so this is the edge of that.
Right, right, yeah.
And so this is that part, a hundred foot.
Okay. And the eighty foot, is that, so the top of the building, the first, there's going to be one section, like eight foot, and then on top of that, from that, you're going to go up eighty feet?
No, there's one plane.
One plane?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to have a recommend- Okay. I'd like to have a recommendation, so that everyone understands. I think you should map it out with balloons or something, so when people drive by, they can actually see the width, the height, and get a clear understanding of what that building's going to be. When I understand, I thought you were going in front of Building 320, so you stand on the road by the light, you look at the two-story building that's 320, you're going to the left of that, which used to be Building 310, which is a single floor, the building since recess. So I guess that's where this is going, which is a wider lot. So you're not affecting Building 320, that parking lot, everything's in the 310 parking lot. Okay. Yeah, I'd like to see, I would like to see that, so people get an understanding, again, a dimension, how close it's going to be, the height, width, and things of that nature. The other thing is too, you keep mentioning Global Foundries. I may be mistaken, but I think ON Semiconductor takes over Global Foundries next year, so that's going to become ON.
Yeah.
And then, I don't know, nobody really knows what the employment is going to be there, more or less, with the traffic study, so something you might have to take into consideration. I know you can't project, but I don't know what the facility is now, how many people are there, but that's something we have to look at. And is ON Semiconductor onboard with everything that Global's going to do? Or that's just transparent, say, hey, whatever Global says ON has to accept?
So Mr. Teagle, I can answer that. Anytime there's a new application for a new business at I Park or any on these two facilities, DOT is on it right away. DOT wants to know what the projections are, they're very strict, because they have no money to make any repairs. So they're leaving it to us or the applicants to pay for these improvements.
All right. The other thing is, you talked about lighting, I'm sorry, I'm ignorant, I don't know what that means. If you compare that to the current lights we have at the gym fields, is it brighter, darker? How would you compare that to the lights we throw on the gym and the parks? Brighter than that? So we have some idea?
Is this like non-spillover light or something like that?
So when you drive through and you go into the rec center, you see all the lights on?
No, yeah, it stays only on their side, wouldn't spill over.
But that, also, is it as bright as that, though, when somebody drives by?
No, it'll be dark-skY friendly.
LED? I don't think that.
No, those aren't LEDs.
No, those aren't LEDs.
So it's going to be a totally different.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine.
Dark-skY friendly.
Okay. And you talked about no parking in front, but yet you've got all the parking, the trucks emptying on the right-hand side of the building, facing it from the road, so technically you are going to see it from the road driving by all the trucks. You said you didn't want to put it in front, but technically you're on the side of where the building 320 is, the parking of the trucks. So you are, so that is visible from the road?
When I made that comment, I meant the shipping ports itself are not in and out of 152.
Okay, all right.
There's also road trees there, too.
Well, the road trees are okay, and it looks nice now. Come back three months from now, you're barren, and now you're going to see the buildings. And what type of signage are you going to put on the buildings? Are you going to be advertising Frito-Lay or anything on these buildings as you drive by?
They were proposing a monument sign on 52.
Okay, so it's at Gate 2, but it's not on the highway, so people drive by, and it's on the, you know, Frito-Lay on the 60 feet up or 40, okay. All right. Those are the only questions I had. Again, if you put something there to demonstrate the size, the width, the height, so that people get an idea of what it's going to look like. That's it.
Great.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Teagle.
If I could just follow up with a couple of clarifications. Our consulting engineer did take out a scale and figured out it's 180 feet from the road as the building, so that's the distance, based on the plans. And also, just with respect to the comment about the trucks on the, I'll call it the left side of the building, as we're looking at it on this plan, I would just point out that curve of landscaping at the corner by where the I Park sign is now currently, I Park 84, there you go, thank you Stephanie, pointing it out there, that's going to be an evergreen planting, so in the leaf-off condition, that will still remain as vegetative screening for the parking of the facility.
But that will be added by PepsiCo.
That is part of, that's a proposed condition, correct?
Not there currently.
Correct, yes.
Can I ask one question based on the evergreen? I'm sorry.
You have to come up to the podium, sir. Sorry.
You mentioned evergreen height, so how, what's the height for the tree when you plant? Are they going to be six feet, 12 feet, 15 feet?
I would have to, I don't know that off the top of my head.
Okay, because when you say that, you can put a six-foot height in 15 years, and now it could be up with the block.
I plan on planting some large evergreen trees to start with, probably in the neighborhood, maybe bulky height start with.
Okay. All right, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. If you could just sign in there, right there, thank you, sir.
The sound study you folks did, I saw some green dots around. You know, 51 decibels is actually pretty loud. I live in, I live in a bunch of places, but one place, I get 56 decibels from a farming operation, and it's enough to make me want to blow my head off every weekend, and it's really quite disturbing, that kind of noise level. With this night-friendly lighting that you're proposing, you know, there's been this orange hue over the IBM property my entire life, so I don't know how night-skY friendly that is, but I guess the experts all know that. Anyhow, I have some prepared remarks I'd like to read.
Sure.
And whatever pertains, take it for what it is. I rise in absolute opposition to this application. Another fulfillment facility on the fast track to instant approval is not needed. Where are all the good-paying jobs that need to be replaced from the closing of IBM and the total screwing we residents received from Global Foundries and IBM? Global Foundries received $2 billion from IBM for what was believed to be continuing chip manufacturing, not potato chips. They took the money and ran, all the while our country has experienced a computer chip shortage, while we sit on an empty, non-functioning premier chip manufacturing facility. Take a ride to Malta and see what the good neighbor policy can provide to a community. Global Foundries completely rebuilt that area. New, state-of-the-art library, town buildings, firehouses, police stations. What did East Fishkill get? A second bottoming out of the real estate market and loss of thousands of real, good-paying jobs, to be replaced by low-paying warehousing jobs and a financial burden to the already overtaxed homeowners of East Fishkill. Instead, all Global Foundries did was truck in a forest full, a forest full of cribbing, only to let it set for months in the parking lots along Route 52, then remove it all and finally pull out. Global Foundries then applied for and received subdivision approval for an eight-lot subdivision at lightning speed and against resident opposition. And even though at the public hearing, we were told that the proposal would not be approved, it was approved the very next month without addressing public concerns. For one, the maintenance of the building at the southwest intersection of the former Lime Kiln Road, now I Park Drive, and New York State Route 52, which stores some of the most toxic chemicals known to humans, and will now be neighboring a consumer food distribution warehouse, if approved. Also, what about all the tunnels crisscrossing the entire property and interconnecting the old IBM buildings that were abandoned when IBM was found to be dumping and hiding poisonous chemicals that were leaking from the underground piping network, forcing IBM to install above-ground piping networks so that the in-house hazardous chemical distribution can be monitored and observed? Having a property across Route 52 from the East Fishkill boondoggle is very enlightening to the love affair this and previous town board has with big business at this site. Does this town really need low-wage jobs, no doubt filled by the illegal immigrants from Afghanistan and our southern border, being flown here to Newburgh in secret of dark at 2:50 a.m. by the federal government? Amazon has already pledged to hire these illegals at up to $18 an hour. Will Frito-Lay be following suit? Assuredly, the majority of these warehouse jobs will be minimum wage, possibly paid half by the company and half by the unwitting taxpayers through some half-baked equity program for illegals paid for by legal resident taxpayers. Already, the semi-truck traffic at the Lime Kiln Route 52 intersection is deluged by truckers relying on their engine brakes, as evidenced by the constant barking and rumbling of their exhausts, while they try to slow down to make their turn onto or off of Route 52. This noise pollution will be exacerbated by the proposed 100-plus truck traffic addition. Now, the additional noise pollution will emanate from the first entry south of Route 52 on Lime Kiln Road and from as far away as the exit ramps from I-84, and this noise will permeate 24 hours a day, since this proposal has indicated that the majority of their operation will be performed during the overnight hours, when the majority of the taxpaying citizenry is trying to sleep. Additionally, the sleep deprivation and noise pollution caused by the constant high-pitched beeping of the truck's backup alarms will be blaring at all hours of the night as they jockey for position at the loading docks of this around-the-clock, 24/7 trucking warehouse operation. With the rushed approval of Global Foundries' original eight-lot subdivision, the town took possession of the nearly private interior road and drainage systems, assuming responsibility for all repairs and maintenance by our already overtaxed highway department. The 80-foot-high proposed trucking facility should be denied. This height will tower over the existing trees, which act as a site barrier to this unsightly facility. Will the East Fishkill taxpayers and fire department be required to provide fire protection to this enormously high facility? Where will the equipment come from to fight a fire of this height? Hopewell Hose? Doesn't the East Fishkill Fire Department already, the Fire District, already have enough taxpayer-provided, unused, idle fire equipment on standby? Sure we do. For all the aforementioned reasons and assuredly more, I say adios to Frito-Lay's and ask that the East Fishkill Town Board, the East Fishkill Planning Board, and the East Fishkill Zoning Board deny this application, which adds no benefit to the town of East Fishkill, only noise pollution, light pollution, unnecessary wear and tear on expensive infrastructure, and diminishes the quality of life of surrounding taxpayer-paying residents. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone in the public wish to speak, or would you like to comment?
Yeah, I can respond to a couple of the points, if that's okay with the board, the town board and the planning board.
Oh, he's leaving, I don't know. Okay, well, go ahead.
Okay, well, for the benefit of those who are still here, with respect to the salary and the wages for the jobs that will be created here on site, as I mentioned at the top of our presentation at the beginning of the public hearing, we anticipate 80 full-time positions to be generated at the site, that's in addition to the 80 construction jobs. The average wage for employees of the facility is going to be 150% of the average wage for in Dutchess County currently, so about $50,000 on top of benefits as well, medical benefits. The positions that would be created are supervisory managers, administrative staff, warehouses, and also maintenance mechanics. So, you know, a wide variety of jobs at a good wage. With respect to, there was a comment about fire protection, the application has been reviewed by the Fire Advisory Board of the town. They issued a comment memo to us, which we're in the process of responding to, so all of the fire protection issues will be addressed as part of the application. There was also comment about the chemicals, the environmental condition of the site. I have Nick Ward-Willis here from my office. If the town board or the planning board has any specific questions about the environmental conditions at the site, remaining from the IBM operations, we're happy to address those. Nick Ward-Willis from my office has been instrumental in speaking with I Park and IBM as well regarding some of the conditions on the site, but those will all be handled in accordance with all of the regulatory requirements, so it'll be a safe site for this particular facility. So those are the points that I wanted to hit in response to the gentleman's comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, Ann Cover. Actually, I came here for one reason, but I'm going to throw in a few other thoughts. Maybe it's the teacher in me, but you guys might want to go back and check out your one slide. You called us the town of Fishkill, we're the town of East Fishkill. So your due diligence was so wonderful.
Thank you for pointing that out. We'll correct that.
On the subject of water, for those of you who know me, the subject of water is near and dear to my heart. In lieu of all the emotional and pain this town has suffered, I'd appreciate if the town did a little bit more due diligence into checking what will happen with the water, what will happen with the wastewater, so that another family doesn't have to go through 17 years of stress. My biggest concern is, you're going to give them this huge tax break for 80 employees, 80. And I did a little bit of research, not through Facebook, but I made some phone calls. They're going to build this 80-foot tower that is primarily mechanized, requiring minimal human intervention. The building they're building is created just for this equipment. What happens? I understand you're thinking about now. What happens, seven, eight, nine? Technology breaks down. It becomes outdated. What happens when this equipment is no longer feasible to Frito-Lay? You've given them all this money for 80 people, they walk away, and we're stuck with an 80-foot building that has no other use? Because the building they're creating is limited. Is that what we really want for this town?
Do you know what the future holds?
You know what? I don't, but I would like to, excuse me, I would like to think that we, as a community, are more concerned with long range, but we do know that the building they're building is highly specialized. We do know that the building is being built for that equipment. Are you going to get a guarantee for them? That they're going to be here 20 years down the road? Or are they just going to take our money and say goodbye like Global Foundries did? I would like us to put a lot more thought into that, because we're, I've heard your arguments, I've watched all the videos, haven't been here, sorry, I'm sure you all missed I'm concerned, because we have enough eyesores. I'd like us to really think long and hard, before we throw all this money at them, what are we going to get long range? Because 10 years from now, most of you aren't going to be here on the board, most of you will move on politically. I promise you, if this is a disaster, I will show up at every political campaign and remind people, because I need you to think. Where do we want to be 10 years from now as our community? This is a community. It's not their industry. What do we want for our community? Do we really want to give them all this money and be stuck with an eyesore? My thoughts.
Thank you. So, we're not giving them any money. They have applied to Dutchess County IDA for a tax pilot. Are there charts in front of my dais here?
No, we're. For the record, I did read all the charts, the pilots. We're still giving them, for such a company that supposedly has all this money, we're going to give them all this tax break, for what?
So Dutchess County IDA reviews the tax pilot. According to the submission, which we are going through right now with IDA, Dutchess County, Wappinger Central School District, and the town, right now, these two charts show what is proposed. The pilot is a 15-year, did she leave?
I think it's extremely rude.
So the pilot is a 15-year pilot, which they have to guarantee a certain amount of jobs and investment in the community. If they do not comply with that, the IDA can revoke their tax break, and they would have to pay back what the break that they received. So according to these charts, in over 15 years, the payment to the county, to the Wappinger Central School District, and the town, will be about $7.5 million. That includes the Fire District and the Library District, which are not part of the pilot. They pay full tax rate to those two entities and any other special districts. If the property remains the way it is right now, just a void parking lot, in 15 years, they would pay about 800... they would pay about $859,000 to all those entities. So, we are not giving them anything. They get a break, yes, but they also are strings attached. There's jobs, there's investment, and Dutchess County is very, the IDA is very serious when they put these programs together. So, I just like the public to understand that it's not they just waltz in here and get whatever they want. There's a lot of guarantees that they have to do, and they're investing a large sum of money in our community. So, I just wanted to let everybody know that. Could you place this right in front of the dais?
In an industrial zone as well.
Which only industrial agencies, companies, organizations can develop there.
If I can make a...
Thank you.
If I can make a comment to the mechatronics that was brought up in the long-term life of the equipment inside. Just as a point of reference, this is the 16th Fulfillment Center that we are installing some of this in the United States. All 16 have this 80-foot-tall mechatronics inside of it, if you will, dating back to 30 years ago. And so, the comment was made after eight, nine years, should the equipment fall apart, would Frito-Lay leave potentially the community? Once again, we have these, this equipment in service for over 30 years. I do not believe that would be the case.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Yes, sir.
Thanks. My name's Eric Eckley. I'm an East Fishkill Town resident. I've been a homeowner here for 28 years. That's not a record, obviously, but it's been quite a while. So, I do feel like this is my town, and I love the town, and, you know, I love looking at the town as I drive through, and I'm not really sure, you know, I'm gonna love looking at this. I just wanted to ask you guys on the dais there and the Planning Board too, how will this project improve the quality of life in East Fishkill?
In regard of taxes, in regard to anything?
This is a multi-billion-dollar company.
Right.
And they're gonna give us $7 million over 15 years?
So, understand a few things about economics. So, some companies will not come here unless they receive a tax pilot, a reduction in their assessed value, because other states and other areas are willing to do that. As you probably understand and know, New York State isn't very advantageous state to do business in.
We have a great town. You guys, you guys undersell our town.
But it's a business model.
They love this. They just said this is a very, this is a great site for them. They love it.
But there's other sites that meet their same requirements. I'm not saying that they don't have, they can go anywhere they want or anything. Have you ever owned a business, sir?
Yes.
Okay, so, you know how hard it is to make sure that you meet all the requirements of your business and pay your bills, correct?
A hundred percent. That's basically, that's your number-one job.
So, then at the end of the day, they're a business as well. There's a business model for everything.
Right.
As a business owner, you should understand that.
Oh, absolutely. So, my business model did not include, like, millions of dollars in tax breaks.
Well, you, did you guarantee, did you guarantee jobs to the community and invest $150 million?
I didn't. I have a few other questions, though, if you don't mind.
Sure.
If we were to assess the value of this project when it's completed, what's the assessed value of this factory and the property?
Tom, did you, do you have that information on hand?
I don't, no, Mark's had it.
Yeah, our controller, oh, Mark is here. Mark, do you have that information off the top of your head?
I mean, it's to some degree to be determined. The estimates used in here are 6.5 million for the building and 15 million for the, I'm sorry, 50 million for the building and 6.5 million for the land.
And I think this is the deviated pilot, so the assessment is set the same way all other properties in the town would be assessed. Every year, it's plus or minus, just like your house, just like the other businesses, and then the exemption is, phases it in over a period of 15 years.
So, did you say $50 million?
Assessed value.
21 million, 21 and a half.
Is the assessed value. So, what would be the actual taxes they would be required to pay on the assessed value of this land?
Right on the chart, right there.
I can't see that chart.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's like this tiny, small, I mean, it's, I've never seen the chart before in my life either, so I don't know how I'm gonna read it, but...
No, he's talking about the full value without a pilot.
So, what taxes? Well, I wanna know the taxes that you guys are gonna let them pay. I wanna know what they're gonna owe. Like, if they, if they have to pay taxes on this...
Well, they're not gonna owe because the agreement says they get an exemption. Right, so they don't owe.
It's not us.
It's the IDA.
It's the IDA. Learn how the system works.
The system works. So, you go to the IDA and you tell them what you want.
Not us. They go to the IDA.
Your lawyer, their lawyer, and the IDA get together in a room. They decide how much they're willing to pay. That's how it works.
We're part of the process. They make application to the Dutchess County Industrial Development Agency, not the town.
So, the IDA is gonna rubber stamp what you ask for. That's literally what's gonna happen.
You have your opinion, so go on with your other questions.
All right, thanks. So, we, she talked a little bit about the salaries, and so, earlier on, we were told it was gonna be above average wage for Dutchess County. So, I wondered, what was average wage for Dutchess County? Nobody told us.
So, the average wage of, for an employee at the Fulfillment Center that's being proposed is $50,000 plus benefits, and that's 150% of the average Dutchess County wage. I don't have the figure, but...
The average salary of Dutchess, of Dutchess County is $35,000.
Thank you. Math was not my strong suit. That's why I went to law school.
So, you're gonna get this in writing in the pilot, that there's gonna be 80 jobs?
Already in writing.
So, where's, so when are we gonna see this? Before you approve this?
The IDA is going to be having a public hearing, which you can speak at.
Thank you.
They will be posting it. Look on the Dutchess County IDA site for the public hearing.
It's not gonna be one of those 10-minute meetings that they usually have?
Once we find the date, we will post it as well.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Let's see. So, are they gonna let a union organize in this facility? I guess I'll direct that to the folks at the table here. They don't have a very good record with unions.
Well, that's up to the federal, you know, federal government says people have the right to organize. There's laws that govern it. That's far beyond our control.
So, they just settled a strike over the summer out in Kansas, where the workers went on strike because they had to work seven days a week, and they haven't had, they hadn't had a pay raise in 10 years. The company eventually, after three weeks of striking, they relented. I'm not gonna read this whole thing, but it's, you know, they don't have a great record with workers, and so, you know, a $50,000 job is a good job around here. I mean, it would be nice if it was a lot more than that, but you could probably live on that, you know, if you're very frugal. And if they would guarantee that, that they're gonna do that, and they're gonna provide, you know, reasonable benefits, and you're gonna put that in writing, then, you know, that's not a bad deal for us. I haven't seen a lot in writing when it comes to the IDA. They just sort of blank check.
I think last month when you were here, sir, I explained to you, last month when you were here.
Yep.
The IDA, when they finish their process, they have an agreement that's signed. It's about, you know, several hundred pages. All of what you're asking about is in that agreement.
So, are we gonna be able to see that agreement before you guys wrote on this?
Yes, it's a public record at the Industrial Development Agency, which is a public authority.
Okay.
You can go up to their office. You can file a FOIL.
But we're not at their office. We're here, right? We're gonna do this here.
Yeah, but that's not our, that's...
We're not affiliated with the IDA.
But it's our money. It's all of our money.
So, go to the IDA. There are another gentleman...
But the IDA, the county IDA is the one that administers the Industrial Development Agency.
So, it's not your responsibility at all? None of you guys, it's not your responsibility at all?
What happens...
You foil it. You're a member of the public. You're interested in...
It's your responsibility.
No, I understand what's in that contract. If you want a copy, go get it.
And you're gonna sign off on it. You're like the most anti-worker person in this room.
What happens, sir, you don't know what's in the agreement.
Yeah, am I?
What happens, what happens to the town?
Yeah, we have your name again.
The role the town plays is when the application's made to the IDA, the town's given 60 days to try to come up with a pilot agreement. Then, if we don't, then the IDA has the right to impose what they feel is inappropriate payment in lieu of taxes. So, that's the role we play. We have a proposal that I think everyone's comfortable with, rather than just have it as a vacant parking lot, to encourage these jobs to come here and the investment to be made here. But if the Town Board did not come to an agreement on the pilot, then the IDA has the authority to impose it on us.
Okay. So, it's, it's an 80-foot-tall building. We all know that.
Well, part of the building is 80 feet.
Right, right. I mean, I saw the pictures. Do you, that's a good-looking building?
25% of the building is 80 feet.
You saw the pictures they showed? That was a good-looking building to you?
25% of the building's 80 feet.
Right. All right, so that doesn't really answer the question, but, so the trees are gonna be 12 feet tall when they plant them, and the building's gonna be 80 feet tall. I mean, you can do the math, right?
That's only the trees that they're planting. There's still the existing landscape.
Buffer.
So, as the other gentleman earlier said, when the leaves fall off the trees, there's nothing to block the view or the sound.
Unless they plant evergreens.
Which they plan to do.
Well, those are not the existing trees. I don't think those are evergreens, just to his, his comment about that. So, I just think it's a gigantic, ugly building, very close to Route 52, that I don't think we want to look at for the rest of our lives.
Well, that's your opinion.
Yeah. So, I remember at the previous meeting, they were talking about an existing condition on the property, that basically, it's already a non-conforming condition, how close the property or the developed part of the property is to Route 52. That was stated by somebody else who I don't think is here tonight. I was wondering if anybody could talk about that.
There's no...
There's no request for any variances, so the building meets the 100-foot setback.
Because something, something that doesn't meet zoning is grandfathered in?
They meet all the setbacks according to the zoning laws that we have.
You didn't explain anything. So, why did the gentleman from their company say that at the last...
Because last time, as we tried to explain to you, last time was a general overview, a first blush for everybody.
Right.
They heard the comments here at the meeting. They've responded to it now, as they will continue throughout the process, respond to comments. So, the two comments they heard was the height of the building, which I think you raised in question. They lowered it to 80 feet, and the front yard setback is now in compliance.
Okay, great.
So, they don't need any waivers or variances.
I mean, I did hear that, that, and I appreciate that very much. I guess coming up and standing up here, you know, is worth it sometimes.
Right.
Let's see. So, I mean, one of the things is, they've already said it themselves, the site's very attractive. It's a perfect site for their business. And so, why are we giving them so much money? I mean, I think Global Foundry's and IBM, IBM had a pilot. I think they paid $8 million a year, and Global Foundry's didn't want the pilot, and they were willing to pay their, their taxes, and they paid like $8 million a year. How come they're paying $500,000 a year?
We just explained the IDA process.
Right, so you're just giving all the money away. Okay, I mean, you can explain the process over and over again.
Why don't you go ask the IDA then?
The supervisor, can I just, I'm sorry.
That's of course...
I'm a resident 42 years. Maybe this is more as a resident. But that site has been there the whole time. IBM, one corporation, we all, you know, said, wah, 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 it's gonna be great for the town. They left town. They left it there. It's been an eyesore, that property.
I drive by it all the time, almost every day.
And so do I. I drive by it every day.
Yep.
Okay? When the trees don't have leaves on it, I see decaying buildings that are empty, rotting away, et cetera. Now, because the town has rezoned, flexible zoning, subdivided into eight lots, and I think it's offensive to the Planning Board to think that it was just rushed through. They pondered it and considered it. We now have a diversified economic area, so God forbid, in 10 years, Frito-Lay goes away, it's not gonna destroy the whole site. We're still gonna have Amazon, still have Global Foundry, and all the other companies that are there and coming in. But you have to be competitive. This is the major leagues we're dealing with. We're not, you know, they can go anywhere they want. They like this site. They are willing to accept the negotiated pilot we have. If they didn't come to that, they go somewhere else.
Right. I mean, I still think we're giving way too much away for what they're getting.
Everybody has an opinion.
Yeah, okay. I guess I'll leave it at that. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else in the public wish to speak for or against or make a comment? Just make sure you sign in, sir.
Hi. My name is Steve Caswell, and in full disclosure, I am the county legislator from East Fishkill. So, I took the time, the, the IDA had a special meeting back on September 15th, where they received and began the review process of their application to the IDA. It will go under an extensive review at the county level. There will be commitments by Frito-Lay. The board, not politicians, but an independent board of appointees to the ID, IDA board, will review that and negotiate back and forth. Some of this is, I'm repeating, so I apologize for that, but I'm just trying to bring things back together here. There'll be a back and forth, where the IDA will, you know, try to get some commitments from Frito-Lay to offset or justify the reduction in tax payments that they'll make over time. So, yes, in the, in the first year, there's a significant reduction, but it slowly climbs over a 15-year period, so that at the end of this 15-year period, they're paying full taxes. Now, I had an opportunity to review the application, and just to throw a few numbers out, the current assessment is less than $1 million on that property. It's gonna go to 21.5 million, as we've mentioned. So, this $100 million investment in equipment and just fixing up the site and making it better is gonna be a significant improvement to the assessed value of this site. Okay? And I think when you start to compare what IBM paid versus what Frito-Lay is paying, of course, is gonna be significantly less. Frito-Lay just has one corner of the property. IBM, at the, back in the day, had the entire site, so it's really not a fair comparison. And the other thing, from what I saw in the application, the current property taxes are only $28,000 on that piece of property. So, when the pilot's all done, they're gonna be paying over $850,000 a year. You quoted some cumulative numbers, but on an annual basis, it'll be nearly $1 million versus $30,000 today. So, I think that's the price that we're paying, is a reduction over time to ultimately get to a full tax-paying basis here. You know, Frito-Lay, Pepsi Company, has been around for a long time. I know I personally expect them to be here 15-plus years, so we will, in my opinion, get to the point of them paying nearly $1 million versus the nothing we're getting now. And if something happens and they find a better location and they move away, there is a lookback or a clawback, recapture clause that the IDA puts in every, every application. So, if something happens and the millions of dollars that they've saved over the first five or 10 years, you know, our local tax jurisdictions will get that back. So, you know, the IDAs look at the pilot and all of those financial benefits, combined with what the town is doing as lead agency for, for noise and visibility and, you know, traffic and just any environmental impacts, you know, it sounds to me like we've got a pretty thorough review process for what ultimately will, will be on this site. And, you know, they've been flexible, from what I've seen, in the first month in eliminating any variances. So, I'm looking forward to, you know, you know, the town and the county continuing to work with Frito-Lay and come to a good settlement on what we can do and how we can partner together. And I think it'll be a great benefit to our community with the increased tax income over time, and I hope we have a great partnership with them in years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, county legislator.
Can I just, real quick?
Sure.
Thanks. So, two points you brought up. So, the IDA board's not really independent. They're appointed by the county executive, and they're approved by the Dutchess County Legislature, so they're far from independent.
They're members of the public, just like you private citizens.
Yeah, but they're not independent.
They're private citizens.
That's how every board is usually appointed.
Right, so, so the hundred-million-dollar investment, or hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar, whatever it is, so they're not gonna pay taxes on any of that? They're gonna get basically a tax break on-
A lot of that is equipment. Equipment cannot be assessed.
Right, and they're not gonna pay taxes on it. That's how, that's how it works.
Excuse me.
It is how it works.
Equipment cannot be assessed in New York State. Do you understand any tax laws at all?
I do, if you, and I will read this before the next meeting.
Well, then, obviously, you don't.
But I can almost guarantee you that it's gonna say they're not gonna have to pay sales tax on their materials that they're gonna use.
That's part of the, that's part of the IDA package.
So, why are we arguing about what I just told you?
You're saying that they should pay an assessment on their-
They should pay taxes like everybody else.
On their equipment.
Like, whatever the law is-
Like, everybody who?
They should pay taxes like you and me and the rest of us. They don't get a, they shouldn't get a big tax break.
Sir, equipment's not assessed. Global Foundries has billions of dollars' worth of equipment. It's not assessed.
Are they gonna pay taxes on all the materials that they buy to build their factory?
If they agree with the Dutchess County IDA, that's part of their benefit to not pay sales tax on the building materials.
Right, thank you.
Yes.